Okay, welcome to the Winter of School Committee meeting on Monday, September 20th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. The meeting is being held in the Harvey Harry Room here at the Town Hall at One Metcalf Square here in Winthrop. Patty, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Here.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Swope, here, Ms. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Perrin.
Here. The meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing none. Can we do the pledge allegiance, please? Ms. Powell, will you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Delegates and visitors, we have Lori Galabin this evening, Executive Director of Curriculum, Instruction and Technology for a curriculum update.
So through the curriculum subcommittee and Ms. Swope, she put together some questions to help me to give kind of an update of where we are coming out of last year, so I'm just kind of going to go through some of those for you all. The first question that she asked me was what measures we have been using to assess our student progress last year and the overall results and, you know, what success is concerned, strategies for remediation that we're working on. We use a program called Renaissance. It is, has Renaissance Star Reading and Star Math that we administer to grades two through eight, a minimum of three times a year. So we started that last, the beginning, no, 2018, 2019, we started that. So we used a lot of our data that we were collecting at that time. We were able to, to give it again at the end of the year when our kids were back in session, which was helpful to give us end of year data. We, you know, definitely have some concerns over some of the unfinished learning that was happening in different grade levels. That was a big focus and target for a lot of people during the summer school program. So we were using that data. We are also using some of the other programs that they use online that are adaptive programs like Lexia, and we use Freckle for math, we use iXL at the middle school. So some of the different programs that teachers are able to get up to date information on their student learning. We're also using our access scores and our MCAS from last year. Tomorrow, the embargo will be lifted tomorrow morning at 9:30, and all of the MCAS scores from last year will be made public. It comes with a lot of disclaimers as far as how to use the data. I have a frequently asked question sheet I'll share with all of you once everything's, once the embargo is lifted. And it's really about getting districts to focus on using it to target strategies within your own district. They're not putting out comparisons of side by sides in communities, you know, putting communities against each other. There is no accountability that will be done this year reusing that data. It's primarily for the districts to use. And there are some changes in how they're calculating student growth because there weren't the same cohorts of students that they've had in the past. So, but once all that's lifted and all, we'd be happy to come back and share all that information with everyone. But we, one of the strategies that we used was reaching out to students to attend summer school. We had very specific groups that we targeted at each of the buildings, and students were invited to participate. That was the first round that we went, and we got as many of those as we could, as, you know, it made sense for them and for their families. And then we opened it up, most of the schools, we were able to open it up to anybody who wanted to participate. So we had thirty, about thirty students in first and second grade that participated. At the ATC, we had about fifty students. The middle school, we had about sixty students that participated in the academic portion, and we also had an additional twelve students that participated in a social emotional learning program during the summer. And at the high school, we had forty-six students that participated in teacher-led courses in Algebra I, Geometry, and both ninth and tenth grade ELA. And then we had about sixty kids that participated in the online edgenuity courses, so the credit recovery courses on their own. And we did not charge anyone for any courses this summer. We used all of our CARES Act grant funding so that nobody had to pay because it was such a struggle for so many kids to just get through last year, let alone to, you know, be able to give them the opportunity to finish those courses. And then one of the questions was about different teaching strategies that teachers maybe have learned over this past year that would, they'd be carrying forward. And I, I can't really speak to anything in particular only because everybody was at a different point going in. So so many people learned so many different things that I, you know, I know for fact that a lot of teachers are continuing to use Google Classroom, and they're continuing to use Google Docs, you know, with their students. So that's a big one, I think, that a lot of people didn't know. I do think another piece is just the ability to use the Zoom and to communicate with parents and to be able to have conferences. So like our curriculum nights there are, and our parent-teacher conferences will be offered both ways. They can come in in person and meet the teacher, or they can set up a time to do a Zoom call because it really raised the level of parent engagement through the pandemic. They were really, we found that we were able to contact and speak with much more families than we normally would at our normal, you know, set times where they had to be there during set time. So I know a lot of teachers are continuing, looking forward to doing that as well. One of the questions was about the accreditation report, which we just heard an update from Mr. Crombie at the curriculum subcommittee prior, but just for those of you who weren't there, October 4th, 5th, and 6th are the dates that they will be coming out virtually to do our, our final, yeah, decennial visit. And really, you know, it was very positive. We're, I believe, in really good shape in regard to everything that they wanted us to work on and put in place. And so I don't anticipate any issues with our accreditation going forward. And then there was one other question about, you know, just how we plan to keep everybody up to date, you know? There's definitely, there are definitely, you know, some concerns, and it's all curriculum directors that I'm talking to, you know, that I meet with across the state. You'll see in the, in the state data as well, it's across the board, it's everywhere, it's not in Winthrop, it's not in Revere, it's not in Walden, it's everywhere across the state. There was unfinished learning. And we were really being charged by the Department of Education to work hard to accelerate the learning and not to remediate. So obviously, there will be remediation needed here and there in particular areas, but what they're trying to really help teachers do and see is to understand that you can find other avenues to teach a standard at an appropriate grade level without necessarily going back and remediating, because it would be very difficult for any of us to try and catch up the last eighteen months if we start by going backwards. So we have to find new entry points, basically, to be able to teach the standards at, for example, teach some of the first grade standards in reading at a second grade level, you know, so that they're getting, they're, they're being supported and scaffolded in their learning, but not necessarily being remediated so that we're slowing the process or missing things, you know? And it's really about identifying some of the, the power standards and the focus indicators that Desi has helped to outline. And so I know the principals, you know, shared a lot of that conversation with staff on the first days about, you know, how we're going to move forward and, and just to continue to have people to reach out, you know, and ask and be creative. You know, we said we have additional ESR funds to help us be innovative in our approach to teaching. So to think outside the box a little bit and see what, how can we do some of this and really engage kids to tie up some of that unfinished learning. So, but I think that people are in a good place. I think, you know, it's been very positive with the exception of a few little technology issues, and that's just me trying to figure out how I'm supposed to be helping them get signed on for Alice and all these other things, but they have a new platform for that, so it's one more thing. But, but I think everybody's been really excited to be back in school and be back in face-to-face with the kids, so.
And I think on the same, because there is so much discussion, I think that's been critical. So the discussion that Lori and I are having, that Lori's having with other curriculum directors, that I'm having with other superintendents, that we're bringing back to our principals that then gets, you know, the same message going in to the teachers, and it's about moving forward. And it's about the positive notion of moving forward. We know we have spots where some of our students are going to struggle. And instead of focusing on words like struggle and loss and things of that nature, accelerating the learning and finding different ways to bring kids up to speed is, is critical for us. So I think that mindset in our teaching staff, because of the deep conversations that we're having and the ongoing collaboration that we're having, whether it's school by school, but it's really a district-wide focus. So I think we're, we're thrilled to see that the teachers are coming back so positive because it's not easy. And they are recognizing, they have this group of students, which is very different from the typical second grade or third grade or twelfth grade students that they had a few years ago. And instead of focusing on, oh, oh, you know, what do we have to do to recover, it's more how do we reengage students and make them feel important and, and make them feel like they are moving forward, and not focusing on the words such as loss and deterioration and, you know, all, all those words that we've been struggling with during the pandemic. So we are excited about that. And the professional development that we have laid out for teachers, whether it's around social emotional well-being of, of students or staff, or whether it's an academic focus or an equity focus, that's really the direction that we're, we're taking as a positive mindset for our school district and hoping to be able to filter that into parents through our curriculum nights and through our parent-teacher conferences. And also taking the feedback that we've gotten from them around some of these virtual, you know, opportunities. The engagement has been higher to, to do a parent-teacher conference in, you know, fifteen minutes, and it only really does take you fifteen minutes because you don't have to drive there, talk to twenty people, wait outside, go in the room. You really accomplish what you need to accomplish in a shorter period of time, and it's more productive. So we're excited about a lot of that.
Yeah. And the only other one thing I want to add was, I don't know if any of you were at the Fort Banks Curriculum Night last week, but there was a, I want to call it a science board, you know, the trifold boards. So I created a board for each school with, with a place for parents to use stickers, basically, to identify different areas that they would like to see some of the investment of our additional ESR funds. So there will be a board at each of the other schools as well. And so it's just one more way to collect rather than doing surveys and, you know, sometimes people don't, they forget, they see it in an email and they forget to go back to do it kind of thing. So, you know, it was really, you know, we put things on like before school.
Yeah.
Yeah, before school programming, after-school programming, extracurriculars, chess club, robotics maybe, science clubs, all kinds of different things. Like, that's getting the most, people want to find ways to engage kids in really positive way, academic ways, but outside the classroom, positive. That was the, that was the big message that came on at Fort Banks. But we also had, you know, some individual tutoring, English classes for parents, so there's a lot of different things for people to choose from, so.
That feedback will help us design how we're going to use some additional ESR funds moving forward, so getting that feedback in creative ways, like Lori said, not just sending a survey and hoping you answer, but really getting parents when they walk through the door and saying, this is important to us, tell us what's important to you. And so that's, we'll be crunching that data pretty soon, like within a week.
That's about all I had for you tonight. Did anybody have any questions for me?
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Galabin?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
So you can get the meeting to be-
Okay, next up, we have our minutes from our September 8th, 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, seconded by Mr. Boncorry. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote to accept?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next up, we have financial and business procedures, warrant number SVW 22-4 and the amount of Do I have a motion for that amount?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Powell, seconded by Ms. Swope. Any discussion on the warrant? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next up, we have payroll warrant SPW 22-4 and the amount of $283,224.60. Can I get a motion for that amount?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on the payroll warrant? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Upstaying.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Upstaying. Next up, we have payroll warrant SPW 22-5 and the amount of $797,168.93. Can I get a motion for that amount?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Barry. Any discussion on the payroll warrant? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote on the payroll warrant SPW 22-5 and that amount?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Upstaying.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Upstaying. Next up, we have payroll warrant SPW 22-6, the amount of $788,254.37. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci in that amount? Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on that payroll warrant? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Upstaying.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Upstaying. Next up, we have a budget transfer in the amount of $268,374. Can I get a motion for a budget transfer on that amount?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Barry, seconded by Ms. Powell. Any discussion? Just a quick question, just because it's a large amount. Can we kind of break that down for people so they understand?
Uh, yeah.
Doesn't have to be line by line, but just an idea.
I know one of those specifically was in regards to the Winthrop Middle School for $5,000. They were looking to move some extra funds around to help out with a unprecedented three-year program they were looking to do, and sadly, because we could not pay for it on a yearly subscription, we had to pay for all three years upfront. We had requested the $5,000 budget transfer. Susan, would you like to huff in?
The other transfers are the transfers to make the adjustments, all the salary changes this year, people coming and going, just to get all the lines.
Okay.
And well, well done in Susan fashion, getting ready to, as Susan gets ready to retire, really cleaning up those lines so as she transfers out, we're in a good space and knowing exactly where those line items, especially with the movement of staff. We've had a tremendous amount of staff movement, which is usual and customary to have that, but it's, it is a lot of work to get those lines to be reflective of the actual teachers within those buildings as you move the budget forward, so.
Excellent, and thank you very much, Susan. Have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next up is building and grounds. We have a Winter of High School Basketball's Fall League. An ask for a motion to, first, a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Barry. Any discussion? I just had, the question is, is all the paperwork in?
All the paperwork is in. He has the invoice for the custodian, and he knows that he will, you know, he'll prepay for that.
Excellent.
Been approved by the athletic director, so.
So can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next up, we have the subcommittee reports. Do we have any subcommittee reports this evening?
Curriculum.
Curriculum.
Just finished our curriculum meeting. Matt Crombie attended along with Lori, Lisa, and then the committee members, Jen and Julie, myself. The, the ask will come as, as Lori mentioned, on October 5th to meet with, or through Zoom to meet with a committee. They will be here on the 5th, 6th, and 7th to meet with other groups. This is a different type of meeting. They won't be coming in person. So that, in many ways, as we all said, we spent all this money on this wonderful school. It was a big thing. So they won't be able to see that particularly, but they were here before. So, but they will be with Zoom. And that, that's why Matt talked to us tonight about meeting with the curriculum committee because we will probably be meeting with them. The other thing about this is that Matt will be able to determine who they meet with, which is different than being able to walk down the hall and meet with anybody. And so on one hand, a little bit more controlled, and also, it's, I think we'll be able to represent ourselves a little bit better because we will have some, we can have some conversations about the type of things that they will be asking. There are four areas that are of interest, particular, particular interest to them, and they identified that in the report before. And so Matt just went through what we had accomplished since their visit, and I think it's pretty, pretty stellar, actually. The first concern they had was the vision of the graduate. And although we had that written, and I remember this, because although we had it written, I don't think we were able, everyone that they talked to was able to articulate that mission clearly. And I think now that we're focused on that, we have it in writing, but we also are talking about that vision of the graduate to the students and staff and to the teachers more specifically, so I think it's clarified. The second was in the area of curriculum. As you recall, the committee was concerned that we didn't have a written curriculum from the high school. Well, we've worked a lot on that, and as Lori and Matt pointed out, that's a big task because it's talking not only about what the curriculum teaches, but how we teach it. So it's, it's thinking, it's thinking in a much broader way. And using the work done on understanding by design and consultants, we were able to put that curriculum together in a way that I think will make more sense to them and actually will help our staff and teachers be better prepared and work more collaboratively together. So I think we're most proud of, of the work that we've been able to do in that regard. The third area had to do with, let me just see it, intervention strategies. Although we have intervention strategies and have always had for students in trouble, we have much more stringent protocols, so we've revamped the process both in terms of protocols and strategies. The district plan is outlined, and it's memorialized, as Lisa said. So we're better able to, to see what we're doing and better able to analyze the results of what came with it. The librarian information specialist, as you recall, we had some concerns about that, and we spent the year trying to find one. So we finally found someone that has both the technical expertise and the correct certification, so, and that just happened. She starts on Monday. That's a relief, I think, to a lot of people. But she will be, she comes from a technical background, she's done a lot with curriculum in another district, so she will be able to integrate the technology into the curriculum, and that will help teachers. She will be a person that does the professional development for them. There were two areas of, recommended areas, but not part of the four that they stressed, which was professional development for teachers as well as community and business involvement. And the tech, the professional development for teachers kind of goes hand in hand with some of the other four really areas that we've already prioritized. But for teachers, we have now developed an electronic copy of all the things that they have done for their professional development. And I think that's going to be very helpful and looking forward to what areas they want to continue to work on. And also, it helps us individualize this type of professional development depending upon whether it's a speech therapist, or whether it's a teacher in the classroom, or whether it's a special ed person. And finally, the area of community and business development and involvement, we actually, Ms. Howard reported on that last time, and I do think that we're doing more, we have more formal ties with the community, and so if they bring that up, I think we're going to be better able to address that. So Matt feels we're in good shape, as you know, this, this would be the assessment for, or accreditation for the high school, so that's what's going to happen, and we adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Swope? Hearing none, thank you. I will move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. So the last meeting, I gave a pretty extensive report in my superintendent report. This week, I have a few items that I want to talk to you about. I'd like to start with just bringing you up to speed on athletics. I know that's, you know, folks in the community have been attending our athletic events, and it's nice to see people outside as well as with our volleyball players inside. And it's, it's just been amazing to see the groups of people and how excited people are in bringing the community together in a positive way has been excellent. We have over 230 students right now participating in athletics. Next round, I'll talk about, next school committee meeting, I'll talk about additional extracurricular activities. Our students are following protocols. Protocols are new this year, and, and kids are getting to learn them, and, and coaches are working on learning them. I can tell you that between the health department and our nursing staff, they're in very close contact with a mask on if, if they're indoors, with, with all the coaches, and helping them navigate through questions that they have with parents or, or students in general on the health and well-being of our students. Our goal is to keep our students active and participating. And I'd like to bring you some, a little bit of exciting news about a plan that we are working on with the athletic department as well as a bunch of other key stakeholders in the Winthrop Public Schools. And it is directly related to our, our assistant athletic director, Mr. Frankie Fabiano, who happens to be here this evening. So Winthrop Public Schools and Winthrop High School specifically really would like to honor Frankie for his years of, of dedicated service to athletics and extracurricular activities. And you talk about bringing the positivity to the school district. There's nobody that does it better than Frankie. So as a group, we are going to be recommending a plan in which the way or the road behind the Winthrop Middle School High School, so where you turn in to go into what looks like a parking lot, it's actually a, it's like a way or a street, goes from the beginning of the middle school front door, and it goes all the way behind the school and comes out by the athletic, by the baseball field. So it sort of speaks to sort of Frankie's sort of road, because when you walk down that road, you're, you're seeing fields to the left, you see an athletic field across the street. If you look to the right, you see the high school and where the locker rooms are in the high school, where Mr. Frankie Fabiano has spent probably upwards of 35-plus years. I'll get the exact number when we do the big hoo-ha about this, but we feel that that's a, a road that Frankie's walked up and down a bazillion and one times. He's led student athletes onto all of our fields. He's led upset athletes back into locker rooms and gone in there and given them some amazing rah-rah speeches to get them pumped up to finish a game. He's been on the baseball field, he's been in the gymnasium. There's probably a field, not a field, in the state that Frankie hasn't touched in, in a number of ways. So as a group, we would like to dedicate that roadway. So that roadway belongs to the school, and we would like to have that roadway named Frankie Fabiano Way. I had the opportunity to speak with our town manager and the park, the DPW, so because it is a school facility and it's our school property, we have the authority to post what we would like to post there. So we think it's appropriate to do that, and- And we would like to do a formal dedication of that at a football game in October. So we have three home games coming up. The big one is October 20th, and that's senior night. And in speaking with lots of people who know Frankie, football and Frankie are sort of always come in the same sentence. Coach Catigan and a number of other coaches and players, I think, would be very excited, and so do the other folks who have been sort of working on this. So I wanted you to have that information at hand. The school committee can choose to make a motion to allow us to do that if they so feel that it's appropriate.
We can take that up on a new business.
So we can take it up on a new business. So I, Frankie and I talk every Sunday without fail, sometimes during the week as well. So I know he's excited about it. And I know that the rest of the community will be excited about it. And it is, you know, well deserved. And we have some fun stuff that we're going to do with it. I'm not telling you about that fun stuff yet. That would be a surprise.
Actually, we might be able to take it out of order and just do it now. I make a motion, we take it out of order. Do I have a second?
Second.
My Mr. Matucci. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, roll call vote to take it out of order.
Ms. Varey?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Wohl?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. If that's okay with you, Superintendent Howard.
I have to think about that. Yes, it's okay with me to do that. We've been, we've been waiting for a long time to do this with Frankie.
Since we're in new business, I will make a motion that we name the road behind the middle school, high school Frankie Fabiano Way.
A second.
Second, if I miss Wohl. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Varey?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Wohl?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
And I don't get a formal vote. And although I don't get a formal vote, I'm saying yes out loud.
I always say Howard did a great job for me. My mom, oh.
Come up here, Frankie, so we can hear you, buddy.
So mommy can hear you.
My mom's doing all right. Sometimes I tell her about my mom, and I would think, I thought, you know. I always say thank you for tonight. Thank you, Chris Crossman, working hard. And I told Lisa, we'll try to get Patsy, get her food, and do that. Easy gal, but I did that night, you know, brother Jimmy.
Your brother Jimmy?
Yep. Thank you.
All right.
Yay.
You deserve it, Frankie.
Yeah, congratulations. Happy for you.
Hello, everybody.
This doesn't mean you can't call me every Sunday night, Frankie. Please, don't forget. Still going to call me. All right. So the next order of business on my superintendent report is just an update on just COVID cases in general. I know that many, many people have questions. We are working around the clock with monitoring COVID within the schools. As you know, Tara Bowie, who was the nurse at the middle school, is now the COVID nurse for the school district. So she can go to each school and help with all the ever-changing protocols and data collection and working with our parents. We have parents who have multiple questions. We have created a symptomatic, COVID-19 asymptomatic close contact guide for our parents. This is such a confusing process for folks. It's scary for a lot of folks. And we're doing our best to communicate as much as we can with our parents. But there are days that we are confused. We participate in every Department of Education and Department, Mass Department of Public Health webinar that they have related to COVID, close contacts and tracing, contact tracing. We are a test and stay school district right now. And I'll talk to you a little bit about that. But let me just give you some numbers. And these are numbers that we have, that we are, that we are actually tracking since the first day of school. This is information that is cross-referenced with the Towns Department of Public Health. Meredith Hurley and Tara work hand in hand every single day. So we are maintaining, you know, trying to stay directly on top of every case that gets reported. So as positive cases are reported, a parent can report a positive case to us if a parent has that information and shares it. But every single day between Tara and Meredith, they go into what's called the Maven system. And it's the state reporting system that only they have the authority to look at. And that shows the positive cases in our community by address. So if somebody tests at a center in Lynn or Everett or Revere, and the test comes back positive, that information is communicated to the Town of Winthrop's Health Department. And then Meredith and Tara work hand in hand to cross-reference that information every single day so that we can let our parents know if they don't know ahead of time. And so that we can mitigate measures within the school for our students who are positive and begin our own contact tracing. So I'm going to give you the up-to-date data that we have. So September 1st is when our students started. So we took a timeframe of September 1st to September 10th. And for students attending Winthrop Public Schools during, between the dates of the 1st and the 10th, there were 11 positive cases, meaning that students were reported positive in the Maven system. Doesn't matter how, doesn't report where or how they contracted COVID, but that they were positive. And to break that number 11 down, this is just students now. Three students at the Gorman Fort Banks during that timeframe, zero at the Cummings, zero at the middle school, and eight students at Winthrop High School during that timeframe. The next timeframe was the 13th through the 17th. So that's the most up-to-date, up until the 17th. During that timeframe, we had seven cases that were students attending school. And of that week, no students at the Gorman Fort Banks, no students at the Cummings School, two students at Winthrop Middle School, and five students at Winthrop High School. So the total cases of students diagnosed with COVID from the first day of school until the 17th were a total of 18 students. Close contacts, because we do test and stay, which means that if you are through contact tracing, which is sort of an Olympic sport between Meredith and Tara, so the contact tracing that we do when we get the information, if that positive student who was diagnosed as positive was in school two days before or that current day, we have to contact trace to see who that child was around when they were not masked and less than six feet away from another person for 15 minutes or more. So it's a very, very detailed review that we have to do. We are fortunate in that we decided to start the school year off in our cafeterias, keeping kids at a minimum of three feet apart and in assigned seats at the elementary level. And at the middle school and high school, middle school is assigned seating. High school is not assigned seating. However, our cameras at both of those buildings and now increased security at all of our buildings, our cameras allow us to take a moment in time and be able to look within our cafeteria and identify children who were around and actually look at the total number of minutes that students were unmasked. The timeframe in the classrooms varies because it just depends upon how students are seated. So at the elementary school, students are not sitting very much. So they're moving about the classroom quite a bit. So that's a lot of discussion with teachers and looking at seating charts within the classroom. Middle school and high school, same thing, a little more intricate in how we have to do that contact tracing because middle school and high school kids move around a lot, but they're moving from class to class. So oftentimes, they're not sitting with the same group of kids, but they may be close to somebody for more than 15 minutes or, you know, maybe even an hour in a day. And then there's athletics, which is, for the most part, with the exception of volleyball, I believe, right now, athletics is outside. And when kids are outside, contact tracing is not necessarily counted because you're outside and you're unmasked, and that's acceptable. But our high school and middle school athletes oftentimes are in locker rooms within our school. Masks are required anytime you're under the roof of the school. So we have to do more investigating with individual students, talking to them. Did you take your mask off? Who were you around in the locker room? For how long was that a period of, you know, period of time where you engaged in having your mask off? And we're constantly working with the coaches as well as the principals of those buildings to redefine how we're doing things based on data. The number of kids that we're finding as positive as well as any, the number of close contacts that we have. So in terms of the close contacts, we have had students that, so if you're a close contact and you have, you have given, parents have given permission for you to participate in test and stay, what we can do with you is if the close contact happened in school, those children can test and stay, meaning they have to report early in the morning. We binax swab them. If they're negative, they can continue to go to school. And we do that for seven days in a row. Binax testing seems to be working well in the test and stay model because as, reported as of today, of the students that have been close contacts who have to now participate in seven days of nasal swabbing, we haven't had any kids test positive in the nasal swab. So it's early detection. We find out someone's positive. We immediately identify the close contacts. And the mask-wearing mitigations in the classrooms and the distancing in the cafeterias appears to be working. Just a, a number of close contacts. So it's a little deceiving because close contacts that are, not everybody has approved to be test and stay. So there are some parents that have said, I prefer you not test my child, and they haven't given permission to do that. So then those students cannot stay. They have to go home. And that's the parents' understanding and wishes, and we respect that. So when we talk about the number of close contacts participating in test and stay, please keep in mind there are some families that are not participating by choice, and then those students would be at home. So as of yesterday, we had, of the positive cases we talked about at the Gorman Fort Banks School, we had eight close contacts that participated in test and stay, meaning those kids, although they were close contact, came back to school and remained negative. Zero at the Cummings School, nine at the middle school, and 22 at the high school. And the numbers at the high school and middle school, because of athletics, oftentimes, if students are in the locker room, we may have to count a number of kids as close contact if you can't actually identify every one, to be err on the side of caution. And that's why you've seen some large numbers of test and stay protocols being put in place for, say, the football team or the volleyball team. If somebody is positive, we want to make sure we're covering a wider array. So we may consider a handful of kids close contact just based on where they were, because they were in, you know, in the, in the high school, potentially in a locker room without a mask on because they were changing, or, you know, maybe in the, in the football team, maybe kids were showering. And so that's what you see in the larger number of kids who we've identified as close contact. And it's really err on the side of caution. The Department of Education just started putting out, if you remember, last year, they did the weekly dashboard where we had to report to them every Thursday the total number of positive cases of kids within the school. Kids that we knew go to the school and they got a positive test result from either their parents taking them for a test or they were tested at the pediatrician's office. That automatically gets reported back to us. So we had to report those numbers. Last year, we had zero incident of in-school spread. And last year, we had masks on continuously, except for lunch. Kids were six feet apart. In classrooms, we're six feet apart, especially, you know, with hybrid learning. So all those heavy-duty mitigation efforts allowed us not to have any in-school spread. As you are aware, the state removed all of the distancing requirements. The only thing that is mandatory right now is that kids have to have on masks all day long, except for when they're eating. We, as a school district, kept quite a few of our mitigation strategies. We kept assigned seating. We have kids three feet apart at lunch. We're using the outdoors as much as possible. Spaces like the Gorman Fort Banks, we're in a struggle with the outdoor space because the mosquito infestation down there doesn't allow for it. It's also very difficult to have a group of kindergartners carry lunch from the cafeteria to an outside space without losing their lunch. And I don't mean throwing up, but I mean losing it, like dropping it on the ground. Our little ones also have to go to the bathroom a lot. So the supervision of taking kids outside to eat is almost impossible because if one child needs to use the bathroom, it has to be a body to take that child into the school to find the bathroom, to go to the bathroom and remind them that they have to come back outside. So we are being as creative as possible, and it's changing every day. I am happy to report, and we're only, you know, a few weeks into school, we have zero cases of in-school spread. And we have no cases of close contacts testing positive through binax. Our goal is to keep it that way. If we start to see an increase, we will work with the town again and look at, it's not called pooled testing anymore. It's called routine testing for that. An example of that is every week, a whole group of kids test. We believe right now that the binax test and stay program is doing just that for us. If we see an increase or if we see an in-school spread, we definitely will revisit that. The weekly testing at the elementary level, feedback from other superintendents in other school districts, because we sit on the same meetings with the Department of Ed weekly, there's a lot of stress and anxiety around routine testing where you're taking a classroom of students or 10 student, little ones at a time down to a gym, and you have people dressed in medical gear that are asking little ones to swab their nose. It is an effective practice if, in fact, you are having difficulty maintaining school spread. If we get to that point or start to see an increase in that, we will absolutely revisit that with Meredith and the Department of Education. The test kits themselves, the binax test kits are free to the school district. What's not free is the management of it all. So initially, the Department of Ed said they will manage it for you in your school system. Ideally, that would be wonderful, but in every school system, I just don't know how they would be supplying hundreds of people to run test and stay programs or to, you know, we're getting a little bit of help from them for that, but our nurses are managing that right now. And the pooled, old pooled testing, which is, you know, not called that anymore, but that that's happening in other districts. There's a lot of in-school staff that need to manage that. Teachers are having their students, you know, under supervision, test themselves. So we don't feel like it's, we're there yet and it's necessary, but it's definitely not off the table. When we applied for test and stay, we applied for it with the understanding that we could at any time bring pooled or routine testing onboard. So I will keep you up to date on that. So the DESI report that just came out is another, you know, anxiety-laden report because it only reflected, the first one that the department did this year only reflected two days. They only took two days' worth of our data, which was September 13th and 14th. That's what they used for their first reporting period in which it indicates that Winthrop only had two cases. And it was two cases on the days of the 13th and the 14th. We had two positive cases reported to us. So you'll see, hopefully, they'll start to spread those dates out and do it like they did before and give us a week. If a child is considered a close contact, parents will immediately get a call from the school district to inform you of that and to give you information. We're working to clarify the documents that are coming out from the Department of Public Health as well as the Department of Education. We're finding that they are extremely confusing for people, even their flow charts. You seriously need to be in a room by yourself with, like, different colored pens to follow the flow chart. So we've had some of our on-staff folks develop something that's much more clear. This went out to all parents. I assure you, if your child is a close contact, you will be directly contacted. Lots of people are asking, why can't you just tell us when there's a child in my child's class or school that tests positive or has a positive test? We can't reveal information about individuals to anyone. What we can do is do our work that we're supposed to do and let you know if your child had been exposed or not. We have talked to multiple, multiple, multiple parents, and we're trying to walk folks through that and working hard to give them clear information to follow. Because like I said, some of the stuff coming out from the state is very difficult to follow. Let me just check my list and see if I have anything else that I wanted to add. Yes, our education planning for students on quarantine. We hope that the only kids that have to quarantine are those kids that are positive. So if you are positive, you can't come to school. If you're a close contact, you have the opportunity to come to school if you test and stay. There will be kids that obviously have COVID and need to stay home. We have worked closely with the principals. We don't have the capacity to be able, like last year, we had a very robust, you know, remote learning. But as we started the 21, 22 school year, we started to realize that some of our kids obviously are going to have to quarantine. At this time, as everybody knows, the department's not endorsing remote learning. It doesn't count for attendance and it's something that they're not allowing us to use. However, nonetheless, we're committed to providing our kids with an educational program that's equitable and we recognize the challenges that families have in terms of technology and internet service and will continue to work with our families individually as those cases come up. So although the approach we're using this year, which has been communicated to parents because it's a little different at each level in terms of how kids will access their work, depending upon their, you know, individual skills, their age level, how they can access Google Classroom, these learning suggestions, we are hopeful will mitigate any further extended learning interruptions. So we've established protocols that have been shared with parents by the principals and parents can absolutely contact the principal if they have any concern or any need for technology and we will make sure to support that, any family who is in need of such. And one more. We have an app coming out in the next couple of days. We are mindful that many kids have had vaccinated, you know, have been vaccinated as well as our staff. If you remember the Department of Education, when they put the full mask mandate on, they made mention of potentially lifting the mask mandate, which would allow you to go back to whatever mask policy your school district has put in place or revise that if need be. But they talked about 80% that they, you know, they're going to keep the mask mandate on, but there's a potential that if your school district reaches 80% vaccinations by building, meaning 80% of the students and staff at the middle school, 80% of the students and staff at the high school, if you can reach that, there is a potential that you'll be able to revert to your own mask mandate. I don't know that that's going to happen, but we need to prepare for that. And we also need to prepare for the future. So we have an app coming out. We're working, I think I talked about this maybe at the last meeting, for gathering data in a confidential way about whether or not folks are vaccinated. So to prepare for the 80% potential, we'll be sending something out voluntarily. Parents can upload vaccination status as well as staff. And it will prepare us for eventually if we are able to move to our own mask mandate in which people would be able to have an exemption, they will have that data already submitted to us. But we won't be able to tell if we're near 80% if we don't already have your vaccination status. So we'll be putting something together for parents, short blurb to clearly understand that, but it will be voluntary for them to upload that to give us a sense of where we're at, to prepare for the future. And I believe that is all.
I just asked, to the chair, may I ask a quick clarifying question?
Yes, Ms. Powell.
Ms. Howard, and when they're talking about building, and maybe this is just an irrelevant question, but because we have one building for both sides, do you know if that would make a difference? Or do we have enough separation that we would, that we would be able to allow the high school?
I believe they would separate the two, that was asked, because there are a number of people who have the combined buildings. I believe they'll separate the two. And then another question that's out there at the elementary level, obviously our little ones that are 12 years and under are not vaccinated. So the 80% is not going to be achievable there. However, staffing-wise, in an arena where seeing a teacher's face is critical to children, will they allow just the staff to achieve 80%, you know, if we ever get there, to be able to, you know, remove their mask? So those two questions have been posed to the Commissioner of Education. By a number of school districts, we all have the same questions. And it's about giving our students the maximum opportunity. Of course, if you want to wear a mask every day, that will always be acceptable. And again, nobody knows the timeline for what the Department of Education is going to do or what the state of Massachusetts is going to do with the current mask mandate. But we want to be prepared for that so that we don't have to wait.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Superintendent Howard? Here ain't none. Homeschool applications, I don't believe we have any in our packet.
We do not.
So moving on to personnel, Ms. Howard, personnel, appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, or leaves of absence?
Yes, we have two postings today. One is for a long-term substitute science teacher at Winthrop Middle School. And the second one is for a special education teacher at Winthrop Middle School, primarily for middle school students on the autism spectrum. And both of those have been posted and we are actively recruiting and going through applications to fill those positions. And that is all, no leave of absence, retirements, resignations, or appointments.
Okay, moving on to new business, we have crossing guards. We had a parent that raised the issue. Ms. Wolf has asked that we place this on the agenda. I think it's better referred to the budget subcommittee and then report back for our next meeting. So I'll entertain a motion to refer it to the budget committee with the idea of bringing it back to the full committee with a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I think you can just do that without a motion, it's the president.
I don't have a problem with just sending it to the subcommittee, but I'd like it to have it come back so we can take some action on it in the next meeting.
We are actively seeking crossing guards.
So it's not a budgetary issue at this point?
So, you know, if we put in, you know, a number of positions or additional positions than what we have money for in the budget, yeah. We don't have as the people to do it. You know, it's not, it's not the most glorious position for people. You're out there in, you know, crazy weather. We do work closely with the police department. They give us as much support as they can. They're always willing to send us, you know, somebody if they can. There are multiple spots in the community that could use crossing guards. So if there's anyone out there, it is a paid position. I believe, you know, I don't think we'll gain more applications than we have room for in the budget at this point. It's just a matter of getting folks to be willing to do it. It's a split schedule, so you're there early in the morning for two hours, you're really there for about an hour. But all said and done, it's about two in the same in the afternoon.
So it's not a budgetary issue, so can we repost those positions?
We do, yes, we can.
Just so we can get those out?
We post them in the paper. We post them on school spring. We actually post them, we have our staff, our individual school buildings, put it in their weekly outreach to parents to see if we can gather anybody. You can do it part-time or you can do the morning and the afternoon if you have that time. It's a paid position and you have to have, obviously, Cory fingerprints. And if you can do two days a week, please let us know. And we do have an understanding of what's critical. Jen O'Connell manages the crossing guard, I think we have two. So certainly if you can get us applications for that, we will call you right back.
Excellent, so it does need, does not need to go to the subcommittee?
I don't think so at this point.
If we have the funds to do so. Okay, next up, we have a retirement resolution.
I just asked a question.
Sure.
I understand from, I was talking to somebody else in another state, actually. And one of, they have the same, we all have the same problems. But one of the things that they said was helpful is that they, and this may be too expensive for us, they put in a camera and they cut the speed down to, I don't know, 10 miles an hour and that camera gives you a ticket, I mean, it's an electronic ticket if you go over that. In that, in that particular area, it is, I don't even know if it's speed. It's the confusion of five streets coming in at the same time, the kids crossing. So I don't know if that would help, but I don't know if the police have an electronic solution or at least something that might help.
That might be better suited to send down to the traffic safety committee, TSEC committee. But I think there's a lot of issues with that as to who's driving the car. If you're just getting the plate, who's driving the car, who do you cite? So, but I think it'd be interesting to bring that to the TSEC, see what the police can do.
We can do that. I can make, I can make a.
Hey, I mean, it's just an idea.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have a retirement resolution for Susan Echols. I'd like to read the resolution out loud if that's okay. Whereas Susan Echols has completed 35 years of service to the students of Winthrop and whereas Susan Echols has been a devoted and loyal friend and colleague and whereas Susan Echols has had a strong positive impact on schools of Winthrop students through her display of genuine concern for young people, therefore be it resolved that the school committee of the town of Winthrop expresses its congratulations and best wishes and that it is voted and made part of the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee on September 20th, 2021. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
To approve the resolution. Motion by Ms. Wolf. Second by Mr. Matucci. I'm assuming there's no further discussion other than we appreciate all your hard work and your dedication to the school system. Come up so we can give it to you.
It was all sweet. We knew that motion was going to pass, we had all the signatures.
Oh, oh, there's a pen, I see. I thought someone was going to sign it. And here is a pen that the school has given you for 35 years. I wish it was a Rolex.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan. I thought Phil needed to sign it, he kept saying. Okay, I think that covers new business. Unfinished business, we have a second reading, adoption of the policy for the smoking and tobacco used on school premises during school activities.
Motion away.
Motion away, the second reading, and this will also be a motion to adopt after the second reading. Is that correct?
Yes. Second.
Second. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Volkory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Powell. Roll call vote, please Patty.
Ms. Barry? Mr. Volkory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.